Hey, John.
All right.
Okay, Wade is back on. Let me make sure we have a call. Chair, do you wish to take roll call again?
Um.
It's up to you.
I believe we should. Yeah, I believe we should, just as a matter of... That way, we have a recorded meeting. It's not like people just left the meeting and we continued without a quorum. So...
Okay.
As soon as you think we have everybody on, then let's take roll.
Okay. All right, let's try. Mr. Kenton, are you back on yet? Yes, I see. Darrell? Just line. Okay, thank you. Colin?
Yes.
Michelle?
I don't see Michelle.
I don't see Michelle yet. Okay, and Kate Fuller. Kate?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Diane?
Yeah.
Okay, Carl? Carl?
Oh.
Okay, thank you. And Noel?
Here.
Okay, great. We have a quorum present. I just don't see Michelle back in the meeting yet, but it has not been two minutes yet.
Yeah, so why don't we wait for a little bit, because perhaps she was using this opportunity to grab a glass of water or something. So, no worries. Technology is really, really fantastic when it works.
Michelle, are you back in the meeting?
I am.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All excellent.
All commissioners that were present prior to the recess are now present after the recess.
Excellent. So at this point in time, let's turn it over to, I guess, Wade at this point, and carry on.
You trust me to join again, huh?
We do. It's, I mean, excellent question. And, you know, with enthusiasm, we welcome you.
And I'll try not to ask questions about making...
It's all right, Michelle. It's okay. I guess we were just at this point at questions for staff.
Are we seeing Mr. Fassin's screen, or is this Wade's screen right now?
I believe that's the applicant's screen.
Yes.
Okay. And which is fine if that's what we're supposed to be doing right now, or do we need to continue the questions and then get to that point?
Were there any other questions from commissioners at this point? Okay, I don't see anybody with their hand up. Mr. Fassin, what I'm going to ask for you to do is... I know I received an email that said I have a 30-minute presentation. Let's move that to the highlights, okay? Because if we could, please. All right? Mr. Fassin, you have the floor.
Okay, great. You know, I'll try to go like 10 minutes or something like that. Okay, so this is the block that we're talking about. This is the blocking question right here. Can you guys see my mouse? Okay, great. So this is East Jefferson Drive right here. And if you're looking at the map of this, you may be wondering, why in the world is this diagonal street bisecting this residential block? There is no other block in the entire city of Inglewood that looks like this. And I've spelled this out very clearly in the application. Because in 1950, the people that owned this, a portion of this block, decided they should build a parkway that traveled from City Park, that is northwest, that's northwest of here, all the way down to Clarkson Street, along Little Dry Creek. Well, as we can see, that parkway never was built, okay? But the city decided to pave this road anyways, because they had the space. And what else would they do? They decided to pave a road, I guess. So if you look at this map, what in the world is this street doing here? Is this actually necessary? Any logical person can see, if you want to get from point A, here at Sherman and 285, to point B, right here at Logan and East Jefferson, you could take this route right here, or this route, or any other route. Why would you transect this neighborhood just like this on a 100-foot-wide right-of-way? It makes no sense. And I'd also like to show you this portion right here. This is the property line of the neighbor across the alley, 3630 South Sherman, which I've also explained very clearly in the application, if you read it. City cannot actually build any right-of-way south of this portion, because they would run into this property right here. So there's nothing they could do. This is the only little sliver of road that they have right here. This is going to be closed, as I'll show you shortly. And we do have preliminary plans that Wade may just may not know about them. This will be closed off. So then what are we going to do? Just drive around in circles in this neighborhood? What a ridiculous idea. So this land does not need to be used for any purpose other than what it should be used for, which is housing. That's what the community needs, not wider streets. So let me try to... I won't even get into the legal aspects. There's significant legal challenges to this. The city may not even have a dedicated right-of-way, which I've also spelled out in the application, and I've asked the city attorney, Mr. Comer, to comment on it, which he hasn't, but we'll save that for later. Here's some property records. This is CDOT property. They show right here that there's never actually a dedicated right-of-way. That's another concern. Here's just more proof of that. This is straight from CDOT. So here's another map right here. This red line shows you where the CDOT right-of-way line is. So the city of Inglewood doesn't even own this area north of this red line. This is all Colorado Department of Transportation property that was dedicated in 1956 to run State Highway 70 down this road, which is now US 285. So the city of Inglewood can't even build any property here. This is all Colorado CDOT-owned right-of-way. And they've told me through open communications with CDOT that they absolutely will not approve any project that's east of South Sherman Street. Why? Because there's a giant bridge here. It costs literally millions of dollars to alter this area that CDOT wouldn't want to spend, because why would we want to widen this highway right here? There's a bridge here. It costs millions of dollars that nobody has to spend. And again, here's my house right here. Another thing I forgot to mention is that East Jefferson Drive was originally dedicated to be 100 feet wide. It's 43 feet wide, which makes it probably one of the widest local streets in the entire city. Another concern that I brought up is that the city is by law required to have a master streets plan that shows, that demonstrates, or that describes what each street should be, what it's used for, whether it's an arterial, a collector, a local street. And the city of Inglewood does not have that. So that's kind of a problem, because we don't know how wide a street should be, or what it's used for. There's no document anywhere. It's mentioned in the municipal code repeatedly, the master streets plan, but this document doesn't actually exist. So that's a concern of mine. So if you look around my neighborhood, this, my house, my property, is the only one, despite what Wade says, the only one that cannot have two units on it. All of these other houses in the yellow, this is how many lots, how many units are currently on it. The pink is how many they could be. So this property over here, across Grand Street, is essentially the same size. Well, why is this a triplex when mine is a single-family house? That doesn't make any sense, because it's the front. This is the front of my house. And the long side of the triangle is the back of the house. That doesn't make any sense. So here's what I told you guys earlier. This, this whole reason I got this 24.22 feet is because I went to the city months ago and asked, "Why is it that this neighbor has a property line that's different than mine?" And they said, "We don't know." So I researched it, and I found that in 1956, the city vacated this area right here, the 3630 South Sherman Street. And the reason they vacated that was to make room for State Highway 70, which is CDOT-owned right-of-way right here. So all I'm asking the city for is to give me the same amount of space, 24.22 feet, that was given to this property in 1956, and it should have been given to the rest of these properties. So in 1956, the city demonstrated very clearly that they no longer needed this right-of-way. They knew right away, "We're not going to build this street 100 feet wide. Let's give some of this land back to these property owners so they can use it." Well, they only did it to this house and not the rest of them, for some reason. So like we said, here's the improvement plot survey. This is what I paid for, certified by John Doty. He's the guy who did the right-of-way vacation down the street. And then other, the synergy medical buildings, he's the guy who worked on this project and he's still working on. So like I said, here's my proposal. Wade already went through that. I'll skip through that. Here is a view from the street, 24.22 feet. This is not in public use. This is my front yard. All I'm asking is for the city to give me my front yard so that we can use it more responsibly. Like I said, this street is 43 feet wide. If the city wanted to do anything with this street, why not just take 20 feet off of this street? This is the widest local street in the entire city, and here's the 100-foot ride right-of-way. This is a completely irresponsible use of this land. Here's another picture from the front. That's the land I would ask the city to vacate back to me. And you may look at this and say, "What do you mean? That's your front yard. I planted all these pretty native shrubs for pollinators." Well, it's actually East Jefferson Drive right-of-way. Here's another picture. This is all included in the application. Those arrows would be the end of the right-of-way vacation that I'm asking. There's a picture of the alley, another shot right there. And this project so clearly aligns with the goals of the comprehensive plan, specifically reducing the cost of housing, increasing the availability of housing for families like me to live here in the city of Inglewood. And this is all in the application. There's about 30 different objectives that this clearly aligns with. Improve neighborhood identity. Allow for housing that meets the needs of all income groups. Allow for housing investments that improve the housing mix. Instead of my dilapidated 1950 cinder block house, we should build more quality housing for families that will last a lot longer. Recognize and enhance relationships between land use and the transportation system. I like this one especially. Capitalize on opportunities for redevelopment associated with obsolescent land uses. This is by definition, this land is by definition obsolescent. It's never been used, ever. It's completely obsolete. It has to be given back to the community. And, and this is a, this is a slide from, from the Urban Land Institute study a couple of months, or a couple of years ago. They, every community is dying for this, for resident-led connectivity improvements, resident-led development, resident-led improvements to the community. Not just billionaires and the hospital, who everybody unanimously agrees should give whatever land they want. The community, the residents should lead these projects. So let me just summarize the application timeline for you guys. December 2019 is when I first described this to Paul Weller, who's with Public Works, because at the time, in 2019, I was told that this is a Public Works issue. This is a streets issue. So go to Paul Weller. He said, "Yeah, we've done it. Just give us a survey." January said, "Email me your proposal and we'll talk about it." January 31st, after discussing, this is my email to Paul, who no longer works for the city. "After discussing with the director of Public Works, please advise me your survey requirements and the specific criteria the city will use to process my application." Those questions are very important. Give me your survey requirements and the specific criteria of the application, because the city doesn't even have any criteria for this application. In fact, if you look at the municipal code, there is not even a mention of a vacation right-of-way. Unlike every other city and county in the metro area, the city of Inglewood does not have any protocol to follow for this process. So, two weeks later, he didn't respond. I said, "Hi, Paul. What did you decide for the survey requirements?" Next day, "I've reviewed your request with the director of Public Works. In conjunction with the Colorado Department of Transportation, we've started a project that will widen US 285, so at this time, it's premature to consider any right-of-way vacation in this area." He didn't even look. There was no survey. There was no title work. There was no deeds. There's no utilities locations. February 14th, he made up his mind. No, we're not even going to consider it. So since February 14th, that's the position that the city has maintained. Despite all the new information that I presented, they don't care. February 14th, that's the thing they're sticking with. February 25th, I met with Paul and Brooke. The city will be widening it. I said, "That's impossible. How could you widen the highway across Little Dry Creek?" Well, they said, "We don't know the extent of the project. It's too early, so we can't provide you any information at this time." Okay, fair enough. Well, it took a few months to get the survey done, and there's a little thing called COVID. I was furloughed. It's still existing. So things got kind of slowed down. August 23rd is kind of when I completed the, my, the whole process, the whole project. I did all the title research. It's all in the application. I said, "Hey, Wade." For some reason, Wade is now the lead on this project, even though it's a Public Works issue, it's a right-of-way issue. "Wait, we've completed the survey. Can we meet to discuss it?" Kevin. And it took a couple of emails to get a response. "Kevin, no. In previous email correspondence, we've already stated our response. I don't believe this has changed." Well, don't you want to see the new information that I found? The property lines, the survey, the rights of way, all the information. He didn't even care. He said, "We've already made up our mind." So here's all the time I spent on it. We don't need to go through that. We won't need to go through this for now. Do that something else. But so staff has essentially said that they want to use this land, my front yard, for cars and not for human beings to be housed in. Okay, I find that kind of unacceptable. In 2020, when families are dying for affordable housing, and our air is the most polluted it's ever been in the history of this entire state. But city staff say, "No, cars." The other issue, economic crisis. It costs the city money to maintain this street, to maintain these streets. Why are we continuing to use these streets? I've already shown you guys on the map that it's a completely worthless piece of land to the city. Why not give it back to the community to generate revenue for the city, at the same time, we can build some housing for human beings? Save some city services, schools. Our schools are being cut. There's homelessness, addiction, food insecurity. Resources could be, this is, we could need to generate revenue, not hold on to obsolete land. So some specific responses to city staff. Wade told you guys that the applicant requests a portion of East Jefferson Drive, approximately 4,000 square feet, be vacated from public use. How is this in public use? Has it ever been in public use? Of course not. It's my front yard. There's zero use that the public has ever gotten out of this. Next, we don't even need to go over that, because he didn't put, he didn't say anything about it. But Wade did say he has some concerns about soils. Wade's not an engineer. If anybody was concerned about the soils, it would have been the building department. They had no objections. Okay, and this is another issue that's kind of, you see in this application and city staff response.
Mr. Fassin, if I could ask you to do something here?
Yeah.
We are being, we are doing our utmost to be very respectful of you, sir.
Okay.
Okay. And we are also doing our utmost to be very respectful of our city staff.
Right.
So with regard to whether a particular member of staff, you agree with them or don't agree with them, or you don't know whether they're qualified, don't make the assumption they haven't spoken to somebody who is, and they are simply speaking for the community or for the city at this point in time relative to their position. You've got two minutes.
Gotcha. Okay, that point is well taken. Okay. But again, the building department had no objections. Utilities, the city needs to maintain access to the sanitary sewer. So this is an issue that was brought up by, I think, let's see, Colin had mentioned it. The city still has access to the sanitary sewer, and there's already an easement. It's a prescriptive easement. There's already laws that regulate building codes. This is, that's a different problem aside from the right-of-way vacation. So here's where it is. We've already been through it. This is what my surveyor says. It looks like he's a professional land surveyor, a licensed surveyor. This is the route that he says it takes. Does it even matter? Probably not, because you can't build on top of a sewer, and that manhole cover is now on my property. I will skip through that one. Okay, so Public Works has said that they might use this land. CDOT has said, "There's nothing east of South Sherman. The intersection is closed." CDOT owns that right-of-way. This is the legal problem. The city doesn't actually have a dedicated right-of-way here. So despite what Wade said, that they don't have any preliminary plans, this is the preliminary plans from Atkins Global. This is the group that was just approved for the contract, and this is dated August 21st. And so let's zoom in on their preliminary plans. As you can see, this is, this is South Sherman right here. They're going to close that off. There is no plan to widen this road east of South Sherman, as CDOT has confirmed, because that's CDOT's land. They've also said, "This is more plans existing, that we're going to use this existing area for bicycle access." And it says right here, this is copied straight from the application. It's all public record. "They'll avoid the right-of-way for all potentially historic properties along the southern side streets." And this was emailed. I even communicated with staff today. They're not going to touch any of this right-of-way. Now, they don't want to anyways. They may, because the lawyers told them they have to, they can't tell me that they won't do it for sure, because the city owns. So they may want to build a zoo there or an airport. Who knows? Um, okay, we can go through that stuff. So that is pretty much it. And I'll finish that up. And I wanted to address some of your questions, but I hope you guys were answered it. I hope I answered some of them through that, and if you guys have any more, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, certainly appreciate that, sir, and appreciate your dedication to trying to do what you believe is right for the city. So thank you very much. Would there be any additional comments or questions from commissioners? Yes, Kate Fuller.
I just have a couple of quick questions. Um, so you reference your neighbors a lot, and I was wondering what your neighbors think of this project. And I was also curious why they didn't want to kind of jump in and also vacate their properties, like you mentioned, that also could be extended. I don't know if you have any insight on that.
Yeah, great question. So the neighbor directly to the, what, to the south of me, he actually passed away about a year ago, and his house has been vacant. The other houses across the street are rental properties. So I'm surrounded by rental properties. And then the other house, 3630 South Sherman, that's a commercial business. It's a, it's a commercial business on top, and underneath it is rental. So my neighbors don't care. The neighbors that I talk to are down the street from me, and you know, this is just not something that we really talk about.
Okay, cool. That's really awesome to know, good details. And then the other question I have was, how are you defining affordable pricing or housing? And I guess, what is your anticipated rent price for a family? And like, how many rooms would that be?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, the physical structure, I would think, is like 1,000 square feet, one free bed, one bath, something like that. It's kind of the missing middle that everybody has been talking about. And I think that the definition of what people should be able to afford is less than 30% of their income. And that is gone. My wife and I make actually quite a pretty good salary, but we can't afford to live here. Because of that, according to that 30% definition.
And I think that 30% definition is helpful, but are you able to kind of ballpark the rent price for a one-bedroom, like what you had in mind? I know that by the time you build it, it might go up, but if it were completed today, what'd be like the...
So I have no plans to build anything or rent anything, and that's not what this application is. This is for actual just land. But I would hope that rent would be, you know, $1,000 or less for, you know, two bedrooms or something like that.
I live pretty close to the property, so I was curious. I live on Hampden and Cherokee, so not too... Yeah, just up Hampden. But those were the only question. Oh, yeah, those are the only questions I had.
Okay, and can I, let me also respond that it's very well known, it's unequivocal in economic and city planning literature, that the number one cause of housing costs, the number one determinant of the increase in housing costs is irresponsible land use and land use regulations. Land costs too much money, because the number one, you know, because the people that own all the land are cities and these giant, you know, organizations. So if we can have a more responsible way of allocating land to be responsibly used, that can significantly bring down the cost of housing.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Colin?
Maybe I needed a little bit of a clarification on the request. Obviously, it's a right-of-way request, and I appreciate that. Some of the discussion that was gone through was the required width for duplexes. And Wade also noted that even if it was a new single-family house, that you would have to have new zoning, or you would have to go through the same processes as we're talking about right now. Wade, can you confirm that, like even aside from the right-of-way request, if they were to build a new house on this, that was a single-family house, but they still have to go through the same processes they're doing right now, is there not enough width for that?
That's correct. Right now, it's considered a non-conforming urban law, so because it's non-conforming, it would require a public hearing process.
So it's single house or duplex?
Correct.
Okay. And can I also make a comment on that? According to...
Hold on, no, no, hold on.
Okay.
When you're recognized, if you're recognized, you may speak. Okay?
Yeah.
Colin, did you have any additional questions?
All right, the mute button. No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Anything at all? Okay, well, I'd like to add a little bit.
I do, sorry, I do have one.
I'm sorry. Yes, please, Diane.
No. Um, so with regard, actually, the soils one was something that I did note in the, in the document that wasn't brought up. And then you kind of went through that quickly. Could you please speak a little bit more to the soils? I noted in the document, it said that your existing structure is probably settled somewhat due to the soils. I just kind of want to hear a little bit more from you about the conditions that are there and the potential for development on top of it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, my, this, the structure that we currently inhabit is totally, the foundation is made of cinder blocks, and it's significantly deteriorated. So I would hope that now, building codes have better foundational requirements. And again, that's a separate issue from the right-of-way. That would be a building issue. But again, like Wade said, there would have to be a soils test and something like that. That would be a separate application that would go through building department, all that stuff. I don't know. I haven't done the soils test. I can just tell you that the condition of my foundation, this home couldn't be remodeled or anything like that. It's essentially uninhabitable very soon. So something has to happen with this property.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns by commissioners, points of clarification? Okay, I'd just like to add a little bit. And then, oh, I'm sorry, Darrell, is that?
Sorry, turned myself off. Turned myself off.
No?
Yeah, that's okay. I just had a couple of things, a couple of comments. I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate, you know, trying, your persistence, trying to go through the process and trying to do what, you know, seems logical and also your passion for housing. But I do want to ask, you know, with your reaching out to CDOT, and the fact that they say they have no plans for it at this point, is there any way to establish sooner that they don't have any plans for it? And I guess maybe that's a question for, you know, city staff as well. I mean, because it just seems like, you know, it makes a tremendous amount of sense, and, you know, if we could establish sooner that what you were told by CDOT is true, it seems like we can conceivably move the process forward sooner.
Yeah, so I'll respond. So I mean, this, the city and the state, they can do whatever they want with their rights of way. But what it comes down to is, does it make sense from a cost-benefit analysis, do the costs outweigh, you know, do the benefits outweigh the cost? So to change, to alter that landscape would be kind of crazy to spend on it right now. So in the future, if they wanted to widen highways, they could potentially do that. But I think now that people that work in Public Works understand that widening roads is not what we should be doing right now. It's not a responsible transportation decision. So I don't think that CDOT has any plans in the future to widen any of these roads.
Darrell, any additional question?
No, I mean, I just, you know, I, yeah, I guess we'll, we'll find out what makes sense, but I just appreciate, you know, what he's trying to do. And like I said, I'd like to see what we can do to move the process forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns, questions by commissioners? Okay, I'm going to make a few comments, but I do want to keep in mind, staff has asked us to pass along a recommendation to the council. We always preface everything... We always preface everything in the positive. So there'll be a motion to approve in a second, any final discussion, then a vote. But before we get to that, I'd like to just mention a couple of things. Seventy-four years ago, apparently, the decision was made on a different property. And I have no idea why they made it. None. Okay? Nor do I think we need to spend a lot of time figuring that out. It's a decision seventy-four years ago, well before any of us on this call, on this, in this meeting were born. It's a non-conforming urban lot, which by definition brings to mind a bigger question relative to development on otherwise previously undeveloped, non-conforming urban lots. That has absolutely nothing to do with this property and has everything to do with this property. And it's something that the city is addressing as we review the Title 16 or Chapter 16 of the municipal code. With consideration to utilities, I have a great deal of respect for our city staff and they work diligently to make sure that they do their best to be able to, um, you know, do what's in the public good for the vast majority of people, if not every single person in the community regarding every single time. I can just tell you that I'm comfortable if they tell me that the plan showed that the city sewer was somewhere else, but now in fact, it's right next to this property, right on this property. I've got a problem with that. Okay, I've got a problem with saying, okay, so we're going to give this up. And what benefit, what economic benefit could there be to anybody for this particular lot to move? Um, I can appreciate the fact that Excel Energy wants, uh, wants to have the overhead lines where they are and/or somebody gets to pay to move them. I can't address why it's a forty-two foot wide street. Obviously, somebody figured it was going to do something at some point and it never happened. And probably what happened is a little nub there and somebody said, you know, we forgot to talk to C dot and C dot really didn't care and the city didn't move forward. With regard to, um, this frankly, I think it resolves itself maybe in the 75th year. So maybe there, whatever that anniversary is at 75 years, maybe that resolves itself. But it would seem to me that, um, we're not going to fix the greatest, greatest mover of prices in the economy regardless of commodity, service or product, which is the availability of supply and the amount of demand relative to the price curve and the price elasticity of demand thereof. There are economic equations for that. I remember studying them ad nauseam and continue to do it every day as we look at particular securities. But that being the case, if there's any other comments before we would entertain a motion, would any other commissioners have a comment before we have a motion? Okay, seeing none, chair would entertain a motion. Again, we do, we do this in the positive regardless of how any particular commissioner may want to vote going in. So would there be a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the recommendation of city staff.
Okay, and would there be a second?
A second.
We have motion and a second. Again, city staff has, has, uh, has recommended to this body that we would recommend to the city council to not approve that as, as written at this time. Okay, so a motion or a vote of saying yes is in fact saying no to the applicant and the petitioner. Okay, and yes to the city staff. Is there any question regarding that? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Kenton? Darrell, where'd you go? Okay. Mr. Hagerty?
I moved to, or I, I, yes, towards what city staff has recommended with the understanding of revisiting this as soon as humanly possible that we can.
Ms. Austin?
Yes, with the same comment, I'd like to have this revisited soon.
Ms. Fuller?
Um, I agree with Colin and Michelle. I think that this is a great idea, but I do think that it needs to be revisited. Um, it seems like it's not quite black and white yet, so I'm going to vote yes.
Diane?
I'm also going to vote yes, but I will say that I agree that we should revisit this quickly. I do think that Mr. Phasing has a fairly undue burden on his property. Both soils and the configuration of the lot makes it significantly difficult to do anything on it. Definitely would like to revisit.
No?
Um, I would like to revisit as well, but I would, um, you know, not like to see it just end up being, uh, you know, kicked down, down the line. But if there's some criteria to determine when we revisit it, uh, you know, the plans, the two big pieces that I, I see in staff's uh, presentation are both about the, you know, the big transportation projects that are, uh, that are just starting. So I'd like to see that we, you know, we talk about when are we going to revisit this or when is it suitable to revisit it? And, uh, you know, is it once plans come out? Is it the end of all the 285 and Broadway projects? Like where in that does it lie? Because I'm not a fan of, uh, you know, kind of a, uh, we should do this, but we don't really know when that's, you know, when that's going to be and setting some criteria. And my, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Darrell?
Yeah, sorry, I had a technical problem.
Okay.
I, I will, um, I'm going to vote no on this. You know, obviously I have the same considerations that the other people had. And I, you know, I've, I've been involved in a lot of things like this and I appreciate staff's position. But I feel like, um, I think they're constrained, you know? But I think what the applicant says makes a heck of a lot of sense and I think this should be looked at as quickly as possible. I would consider, you know, maybe making an amendment, maybe that for, for a certain timeframe so it does not get delayed. But I'm voting no.
Okay, Mr. Adams?
Yes, with a review in the, in the future at some time.
And Chair Freemeyer?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. And Mr. Phasing, we certainly appreciate your diligence and frankly, a great deal of history and a great deal of work. This will go before the city council with the recommendation as you just heard. And we'll wish you all the best and I'm sure we'll see you here shortly. Thank you very much, sir. All right, next item on the agenda, Mr. Voberl, we have the city center redevelopment.
We've been planning zoning commission members. As you have been briefed, I believe, in the last year by Dan Perumba, the city has been diligently working on city center redevelopment. The city has been working with a private preferred master developer out of Portland, which is SKB Scanlon Kemper Bard. And there's also another, and that we're working on that with them on the civic center properties and potentially the Selby property to the north, which is the RTD parking ride. And then we also have, have been dealing with L and R Partners, which is a representative of the bondholders of the former Miller Wine Garden Realty, commercial realty properties. And in the last few months, we have been diligently having dialogues with these different outfits, trying to see if there is some kind of deal to be had. And we have, we are pleased to announce that, uh, Dan Perumba and the city have come into agreements with the dip, with both SKB and L and R Partners in a series of financial transactions and land swaps that would make altogether these, both these, these agreement would make a much more compelling redevelopment of city center Inglewood. The timing is very critical to this potential agreement. And we have determined as staff that the best way for it to make that happen in the time, short timeframe that would be needed would be that we would need to do a rezoning, a base rezoning from the existing planned unit development to, we believe, the best, the best base zone, rezone, the best base zone to be, to be rezoned to would be the MUB one zone district, which is the central business zone district that stretches from Sherman Street to Aladdi Street and from 285 to Inglewood Parkway, or probably to Floyd, actually. With that, uh, so we will be, we're planning on starting a rezoning process with you. Uh, we have reserved a couple of different nights for this in November and December and potentially in January to work on the potential rezoning of city center from PUD to MUB one. For tonight, because of short, shortness of time, we've also decided to bring on Dan Perumba again to give you the same presentation that he just gave to council about eight days ago and which the council did give us a green light to go ahead to try to make this deal work and to proceed with the rezoning. So at this time, I think I'm going to bring up my PowerPoint. Uh, and then Dan will come in hopefully and give you the presentation that he gave on, uh, eight days ago to city council.
Thank you, John. Thank you, commissioners. We thought before you guys started getting into some of the details of this anticipated rezoning of city center, we wanted to give you the, the overall back, background of, um, the overall redevelopment plan and, uh, the anticipated transactions that we've been working on with both SKB and with L and R. And so I'll try to shorten up what we presented to city council. But I think it's really important that you see some of this and, uh, because it's a good recap of, um, some of the background. John, I can try to do, hit my share screen here. Just bear with us one second. Okay, John, I'm going to hit mine.
Okay.
See if I can call, call it up. And hopefully you all commissioners can see this.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move forward then. So this is, uh, this first part of the presentation, which I'll do is really a recap of what we presented at city council last week at study session. And it followed up as, you know, as we've done with you, we've had a number of briefing sessions with them over the past two years, starting really around the time of the, um, of the foreclosure on the former Wine Garden property in August of 2018. So we took them back here to the overall city center site plan. The fifty-five acre property is outlined in yellow. The property that's the year called the C three property. C three was the special servicer who represented, who originally represented the foreclosing bondholders in red and then the city property, city controlled property, either the city or Eiff controlled or owned in blue. And ironically, each of those properties is roughly eleven acres. So between the two properties, there's a control, um, through the city of about twenty-two acres or about half of the original project. And indirectly, the city, you may remember, controlled, um, the former Wine Garden property by virtue of a land lease, a ground lease below that property with a term of seventy-five years and now approximately fifty-five years remain. So in, in, uh, big picture terms, here was, uh, the overall deal that we're anticipating coming together under a framework agreement. And the four parcels or blocks of the overall property are called out. You'll see there A, B, C, D, as well as a sub parcel BB, which is the retail that fronts on to the plaza area around the station and the fountain area. So under this overall approach, on parcel BB, several pieces of that would be sold from L and R to, uh, SKB and they include the twenty-four hour fitness building, the twenty, the Tokyo Joe's building on the corner there of Inca and Hampton. Unfortunately, that's not labeled, apologize for that. And then also, as I mentioned, that BB parcel would be conveyed to, uh, SKB. Then on Block C, uh, the southern half would be conveyed to a multifamily developer for a multifamily project. And the north half of Block C would also be conveyed to SKB. And they envision, uh, some redevelopment on that block, but importantly, also a new shared parking structure. Parcel D or Block D then to the east would be conveyed to a long-term passive investor selected by L and R. And it would be held by them without any short-term redevelopment. So what this overall deal does is it allows them to maximize their recovery of the foreclosed debt. They still will lose a very significant amount of money, but this allows them some amount of recovery. It's also ironic that the thing that allowed this deal to kind of come back together was really the impacts of COVID, um, which tremendously hit the retail sector, their retail tenants here, some of which have gone out of business and really the overall short-term value of the property. So all of a sudden, they were motivated to work hand in hand with the city in a way that prior to COVID was not their intention. So here is, uh, the basic idea of the framework agreement. It's, uh, it, it falls under something we've called the redevelopment approach, which really we asked for council direction and early consent on this framework agreement and the redevelopment approach. And it had three keys to it. One is terminate the ground lease and facilitate the transfer of the fee simple interest on that property to three separate parties, including SKB in separate transactions. Number two is to initiate the city-sponsored rezoning from PUD to MUB one. As John mentioned, this will be a process that will be largely under your, um, control here for the next few months. And then number three was really to endorse the concept of a three hundred fifty plus or minus unit, multi-unit, multi-unit, uh, project on the south half of Block C. And, um, what we said to council is without council approval of this direction, L and R, and they've told us this, would proceed to lease the vacant space and extend other leases and then sell the property as is. We've referred to that as the status quo approach. The problem with that approach is that by, um, by renewing the leases, extending the leases, effectively they take the Wine Garden property out of play for redevelopment for the next ten to twenty-five years. During that time, the city would have very little control over that property and very likely continue to observe it decline in a very, in various ways. So we reminded, we reminded council that the redevelopment approach was very consistent with their actions and discussions with staff over the past two years. They took a number of bold actions. You may remember, we initiated a master developer procurement process. They authorized us to retain outside counsel with expertise in ground leases and master development agreements. They were quite bold in actually authorizing various statements to be included in the offering package for the property about the city's willingness to either terminate or extend the ground lease. And then ultimately- And then ultimately, the selection of S K B. We've been working, as we reported to you, very well with S K B. We're very happy with that partnership as it's, as it's evolving. We're working now under the second of three agreements with them, ultimately trying to get to a master development agreement, probably now in the first quarter of next year. So we reminded council that they had consistently voiced a preference to avoid the status quo scenario and seeing the former Wine Garden property just sold to a status quo buyer. And so what we did here to help provide castle with some support for moving forward with the redevelopment approach is we had the Tribe of S K, the S K B team put together two alternative site plans. I won't go in great detail on these plans, but in the status quo approach, which is, which is here, sorry, this, this one wasn't relabeled correctly. This is the status quo site plan, and it refers really strictly to that city property on the west, so the colored portion. And you'll see the Civic Center building outlined there, too. So the total amount of redevelopment is actually quite limited without including the L and R property with that. The second site plan here is the redevelopment approach site plan. And all of a sudden, you see that S K B ends up with control of much, many more additional parcels for development, including the two-story buildings on the south side of Inglewood Parkway. S K B ends up controlling the twenty-four hour fitness building, as well as that parcel B B. The, the north half of block C also gives them the opportunity to build a new shared parking garage that would provide replacement shared parking for R T D, as well as replacement parking for the current Civic Center parking garage that would be demolished. So we, we outlined for council really the significant benefits of the redevelopment approach. It produces much more revenue for the city over time. S K B will be providing, based on that additional development opportunity, much more development-related revenue to the city as defined in the master development agreement. We went through an analysis on property and sales taxes. Basically, I can tell you that in, on an apples to apples basis, we kind of started out at the same point, but going into the future, the redevelopment approach creates much more upside opportunity for the city, both on property and sales taxes. And we reminded council that on block B and C, sales taxes have been declining over the past four years and assessed property values have been flat. And so redevelopment creates a significant opportunity to change that. We again mentioned that the plaza adjacent retail has been a long, you know, has been a long sticking point for the city in terms of being able to fill that space, activate that area, being able to bring that under S K B's control is really a big plus. And then, of course, being able to redevelop the north half of block C also brings a lot of additional value, a long-term value to the city. And the, you know, the successful redevelopment of City Center will have a strong impact on the surrounding areas as well. We reminded council that the benefits far outweigh the cost. The only cost that we could identify to the city of terminating the ground lease is the potential value of that property fifty-five years from now. But because no payments are received by the city for that entire fifty-five-year period, and because of the risks, unknown risk about redevelopment of that property fifty-five years from now, that, that value is nominal. In some cases, you could also almost say that it's negative. And so there's very little give up by the city in terms of transitioning that property from a ground lease to fee simple. As mentioned, the redevelopment approach really eliminates a number of major constraints to redevelopment on primarily block B, the Civic Center block. And one of, one of our concerns has been, and I guess I'm jumping to consequences of not proceeding with the redevelopment approach. We're concerned, staff is concerned that if the redevelopment approach does not move forward in the framework agreement, that we potentially risk S K B as our long-term redevelopment partner. So council agreed. They basically pulled their positions and identified kind of a consent tally, if you will, of five to two in favor of the direction we were recommending. They also agreed with directing staff to initiate the rezoning. And so we, we went forward. We've notified L and R of this direction and have begun process of drafting the, the framework agreement. And so with that, let me just turn it back to John and kind of get into really the purpose of discussion with you, which is the rezoning effort. And John, I'm happy to keep going with the slides or stop share and try to let you do it.
Actually, at this point, I think it might be good to, just as you had questions, ask question, asked if anyone had questions or discussions, I believe that you should go ahead probably and, and do that. The time is kind of late at this point, and I think this is a good stopping point and that we, I can pick up with this in November. So I think, I, I think I would rather just let, let the commissioners, if they have any questions or discussions on this, to opine.
Okay, good audible.
Certainly appreciate that. Michelle?
I can never figure out which way is the right way to hold my hand with this, but mirror images are confusing to me. As we all know, COVID has had a huge impact on real estate. And so my question is, is what is the timing of this? And because some of the retail and other things may look a lot different going down the road because of COVID.
I, I would say our overall agreement with S K B as the master developer has probably been slowed ultimately, you know, let's, let's say conservatively, three to six months. But the good news is that they're fully on board, they're fully engaged, and they see that it's probably brought some opportunities their way that wouldn't have existed without COVID. Namely, the opportunity to really bring portions of the L and R property into the overall redevelopment plan. You guys may remember that when we briefed you a couple of times previously, we had mentioned the fact that S K B was actually one of the finalists to purchase the former, the Wine Garden property, and they had maintained their interest in acquiring portions, if not all of that property, and that was one of the criteria that, that caused the city to select them as the master developer. The other thing I'll just mention quickly is I think COVID makes some of the retail on the former Wine Garden property, the big box parking lot, kind of old-style, you know, retail that was popular twenty years ago, even more outdated now, especially as, you know, people have gotten more used to online retailing and ordering. You know, you just watch those businesses and it, it just appears through observation that they become even, even less popular, probably even more dated more quickly. And so that has, I think, accelerated the opportunity to redevelop that property into other uses, more density, more mixed use, which is really what we should have in close proximity to the station.
I, I would agree with you with one exception. I do believe that Walmart, although there is that huge parking lot that goes all the way out to Hampton, but the, the park that's closest to Walmart, it's pretty full most of the time.
Yeah, Walmart has done well through the pandemic. They'll continue to do well. They've been, I'll just mention, a very good participant in our Downtown Development Authority efforts. They have a great manager of the store, and ultimately, we hope that we can work collaboratively with them on some ideas to better integrate them into the city center redevelopment, maybe even recapture some of their large parking lot on the south half of their property.
Yeah, I would say so. And also, of course, Walmart has done another great thing is, is they've got this, and I've used it before, too, where you log in and then you just, they tell you when it's at the store for you to pick up. I mean, so they've really, I, so I just want to be cautioned that we don't want to hinder Walmart's efforts because they're, they're busy.
Yes. And I think if we can put, you know, significant number of new residential units in close proximity to Walmart and their grocery store in this Walmart, I, I mean, I think it can be a win-win for everyone.
Yeah, and I agree, the southern half is a little bit, not, not as well-used, but I think there's, isn't that where Harbor Freight is too and Ross? And there's a vacancy next to Harbor Freight?
Harbor Freight and Office Depot are the large retail tenants on the block that's identified for redevelopment.
And, and part of Harbor Freight's building is empty, correct?
Yes. And then Ross and Petco, who have long-term leases and are probably the most viable two tenants in that whole project, would stay in place.
Yeah, and I, I think places like Office Depot and those kinds of things will probably shrink, so, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. I see your hand up.
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation and the update on, on where things are going. Definitely don't want to second guess what council has moved forward with. I did have just a question about the city's building, as we currently have it. Do they pay rent? Do they own that building? And is that, is there, how does this impact those facilities?
Good question. As currently structured, the city actually pays rent to the Inglewood Environmental Foundation through two thousand twenty-three, at which time that, that will, arrangement will end and that property is returned to city ownership. However, if you look at how that building sits in the middle of that whole site, particularly at an angle and a size, it's, it's tremendously inefficient. It's very dated, it's very expensive to operate. And so the general plan, and we've mentioned to city council, this would obviously all be subject to future review and comment, is that there's probably a better location for the city and a better fitting, more efficient Civic Center building that would then allow the balance of that site to be better redeveloped and unlock the occup, you know, the opportunity cost that's locked up in that site today. And so what we've outlined for council, and what we've outlined for S K B, is that we'd like to see a couple of alternatives, with the understanding that the long-term occupancy costs for the city need to be equal to or lower than staying in the building as is going forward.
And then one more quick question. Obviously, you know, things change, things slow down. What are the guarantees for redevelopment? Are, is there a certain minimum square footage that they have to put in? Anything like that as part of this agreement with, for, for these properties or, and the timelines then for those?
Good question. As part of the transition from the ground lease to fee simple ownership, there would be a number of agreements, both with L and R and with their buyers, if you will, their successors. And so the, the plan is that we would gain for the city some approval rights and some protections. For example, the hope is that we'll have some approval right over the multifamily developer on the south half of C. It's envisioned that each of those transactions would have a development, development covenant as part of it. So the buyer would have to start development within a certain period of time. If they didn't, the city would have repurchase rights as, as it pertains to the S K B portions of the property. All of those will also be addressed in the master development agreement between the city and S K B. So there'll be a lot of protections over, for, for the city and what happens to those properties in that agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other final questions before we move on so that we can end on time? Yes, Diane?
I just had a question, Dan. Could you remind me, or kind of tell me again what the, what the plan for the kind of connectivity to this, to this area would be, especially in terms of this redevelopment approach? I, I just have always felt that the city center is, is sort of oddly nestled, and you, you know, if you're coming on Hampton, you can't really see it. If you're coming from, you know, Dartmouth or Floyd or something, you kind of can't see it. Walmart's parking lot makes it almost like a weird horizontal wall. So I'm just curious how, how you envision, other than really jamming that full of residential that will just activate it all the time, how you would imagine people from the rest of Inglewood would really kind of be drawn there?
I think a couple of thoughts on that front is I think the overall redevelopment would really put a lot of focus on the area. There would be, signage would be a big part of that. You know, the irony at this location is between the multimodal transportation and the surface roadway network, this is probably one of the most accessible sites in the entire metro area, but to your point, no one is really aware of it. So, and one of the reasons for that is the density and heights have always been too low. So if you increase the density, the uses, the height, and I think some of the accessways can be improved, too. All of the consultants, as well as the developers working on this project, have looked at Inglewood Parkway and talked about how it needs to, it, it needs to be strained out in ways. It's a very confusing kind of route to get to the station. The station is not even visible from areas to the east of City Center, so there's the thought about making Inglewood Parkway much straighter and increasing the visibility to, directly to the station. And then, of course, one of, one of my favorites is under the Downtown Development Authority, I think there's an opportunity to really make the Inglewood trolley a, a much more functional and convenient transit connector that connects City Center to South Broadway, to the medical district, in a way that people would actually use it, you know, not just look at it and go, oh, isn't that quaint, you know, but would actually hop on it and use it to connect these three areas. And I think the D D A could potentially support improvements to the trolley, improvements not only to the vehicles, but also to the schedules. And, and the developers, too, could potentially contribute to that. So if you put all those things together, I, I think it becomes a much more accessible area that people are much more aware of.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Noel, I saw your hand.
Thank you. At what stage of this process is the traffic flow analyzed and changes to the, you know, the general roadway is considered? And the main reason I ask that is it looks like there's a huge amount of parking being added here. And, you know, at the same time, a lot of changes to two eighty-five to improve the flow, but just from the little portion of the map on the screen, you know, there's a number of traffic lights leading out of this area. You know, is there a part in the process where that's considered?
Yeah, I, I would generally say that that's considered probably during both the rezoning stage, the overall replanning stage that kind of goes hand in hand with that, and then, or specific projects, too, it would be looked at. I would say generally speak, a couple of things on your observation. I think there's a general goal to take a lot of that surface parking and put it into a parking structure, or potentially long-term, too. or potentially long-term too, and make it much more efficient and sustainable by making it shared parking that serves multiple uses. There was, there was another thought I had too about parking. Oh, that, that a major goal is, you know, we have an obligation to provide 910 spaces to our, RTD. And, you know, there's a lot that's not, not optimal for that sharing agreement. Particularly now, those two, the two lots and areas where they park are essentially empty. You know, so the 910 cars that were there before COVID are not there now. And so what we want to do, and we think we have a good opportunity to do it, is reduce the RTD shared parking. And in doing so, make sure that it serves the project and serves Inglewood rather than what it had been, which was really, you know, a park and ride that served a much wider area and didn't really directly benefit Inglewood.
Certainly appreciate that. In deference to time, we're going to be visiting this a number of times in the future. I believe, John, you'd, you'd referenced November. So with that in mind, I'd like to bring this particular part of the conversation to a close. Seeing no objections to that, and let's move on to the next item of the agenda. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. Really appreciate it. Sorry for the abbreviated timeline, but obviously you were in attendance earlier in the meeting. You knew what happened, so.
Hopefully this will be a great foundation for you as you get into the nuts and bolts of the rezoning. So thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate it, Dan. Dan, thank you very much. Staff's choice at this point? I have nothing. Nancy, do we have a, do we have a potential quorum on November 3rd?
Hi, there's Wade. I'm gonna, we have a very, the simple answer is yes, we have a bare quorum. We have five. We have the minimum quorum, excuse me for stumbling over that.
And sorry, everybody, it has not been a great night for me on this system. So I don't have any further, other than we don't have any specific items coming up on the third.
Okay. Does anybody have a specific objection if we cancel the meeting for the third, understanding there's no specific impressing business that needs to be taken care of at that time? And we would barely, and we would just have a quorum? Any objection to canceling the meeting? Okay, we'll cancel the meeting for November 3rd, please. All right. Anything else from staff? All right, seeing, seeing none, we'll go to Dugan. How are you, sir?
I'm fine, thank you. How is everybody? They all look good. I have nothing else to report for this evening's entertainment.
Certainly appreciate that, Dugan. And once again, you've, you've added a great deal to the, the meeting and we're glad you're here every time. So thank you so much.
I'm glad you liked to have me here. Thank you.
Absolutely. And you know, your, your photo is awesome. It looks just like, it looks just like your name.
Well, and it keeps me young.
Absolutely. You haven't aged a bit in months. It's incredible.
I have. COVID's been good to me.
Oh yeah, I can see that. I can see that. So I'll tell you what, let's go to commissioners twice at this point. I'm going to go around the horn as I see them on my screen. Carl, I'm going to go to you first.
I have nothing here, but I'd like to talk more about the redevelopment and how status quo, but that'll be later on.
Okay, thank you. Colin?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
I have nothing to add. Thanks.
Kate?
I don't have anything to add except for thank you to staff for, for getting through that technology issue that came up. That's never fun and you guys did it with such grace. So thank you.
Absolutely. Daryl?
Yeah, I had a couple of things actually. I, you know, some legal problems were mentioned with our first presentation. And I'd like to, you know, hear the, the, for Dugan to tell us a little bit about that. I'd like to get a little more information. If he wants to provide that offline, that's fine, but I, I think we didn't go into that, that ended up that we should. Thank you.
Certainly appreciate that. And, you know, if you could address that, Dugan, at some point, we'd appreciate that as well. Michelle?
Oh, I was thinking you were going to talk to Dugan. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thanks. Noel?
Nothing further.
And that brings me to me, and I have nothing to add but to wish everybody a wonderful month until we meet again or thereabouts. I would encourage everybody to vote. It's a great opportunity to do something so few people in the world have the opportunity to do. And also to anybody who's listening, regardless of the outcome, we are all still Americans. We are all still entitled to our own opinions and we all would hope that regardless of the outcome, whether it's your person or not, that we'd all hope and pray that they would be tremendously successful. It's in our, our best interest. So with that, I wish everybody nothing but, nothing but the best. We'll see you in about a month and thank you so much for attending this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.